Welcome to the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board of Directors meeting for Wednesday, May twenty seventh at two twenty uh twenty twenty. This is a special meeting labeled such because even though it is the Wednesday meeting, it is a different starting time. Number one on the agenda is reorganization of the board and appointments to committees. At this time, I'm asking for nominations for board chair. Are there any nominations? Leon?
Uh Dick France as chair.
Is there a second to that? I think I heard Jayla first, so alright, uh one nomination for Dick France and second, are there any other nominations?
Move close nominations.
Okay, a motion was made to move uh was to close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor of closing nominations say aye. Is there any opposition to closing nominations? Hearing none, I'll deem the nomination to close and I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of Dick France to be chair of the Southwest Vermont Supervise Union Board, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then I'll record that Dick has been elected and it is now your meeting. You need a vice chair, Nick, and a clerk.
Yep, good afternoon, everybody. Uh we're looking for nominations for a vice chair. Are there any nominations brought forward for a vice chair?
I'll nominate Leon if he wants to serve.
Are there any other nominations?
Move close nominations.
We have a motion to close nominations and we have one nominee for vice chair. Uh all those in favor of Leon Johnson as vice chair, uh by by saying aye. Any in opposition? And no abstentions? Leon, congratulations, you're now vice chair and we need to uh elect a clerk for the board. Um we would like a nomination for clerk for the SVU board. Do I hear a nomination for clerk?
I'll nominate Ms. Secure Sakara.
Is there a second for Jayla Sakara?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Are there other nominations?
Move close nominations.
Alright, we're we're we have a motion to close. We have a motion to close the nominations. Was that discussion on this motion, Jayla? No, okay. All those in favor of Jayla and clerk? What she'll accept. All those in favor of Jayla uh as clerk of the SVU board, signify by saying aye. Congratulations, Jayla. Um I'll take a minute to uh read the agenda. Hopefully, the folks um from Arlington and Sandgate um have seen this agenda. Um item one was reorganization, which we just completed. Item two, public comments. Three would be finances and operations related to that. Four is the consent agenda, which includes minutes, warrants, uh retirees, resignations, and nominations. Item five, uh there are three fa- policies to consider this afternoon. Uh fifty fifty discipline of pupils, suspension and expulsion. Fifty sixty five verbal and physical assault of an employee, number fifty four hundred, student safety. Item six is the superintendent's report. Item seven is the chair's report. Under eight is other and there is information enclosed. Is that agenda satisfactory to the board?
Yes.
Alright, you're hearing no objection. Are there any members of the public uh able to connect here? And perhaps we could include uh Arlington and Sandgate folks as uh public comments if you wish to um say anything at this point. Hearing none, we'll move on. Finance, operations related to finance. We have uh two treasurer's reports. One for March and one for April.
I'll move them.
We have a motion from Fran to accept both, Fran?
Yes.
And we have a second from Leon. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept uh March and April's treasurer's reports? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh I saw no opposition, I don't think. Are there any abstentions? Seeing none, the treasurer's report for March and April has been accepted on unanimous vote. Um item B under finances, donation to the Abbey Group for Meals for Students program. Um and I believe that was done by uh Centerline Architects. So we need a motion to accept that donation.
So moved, second.
We we have a motion and a second. Um is there any discussion on this issue? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Are there any abstentions? The motion carries on a unanimous vote. Procedure for executing contracts, I think we did at the last meeting, did we not?
Not sure. I do have the language if you want to read it, just to be su- sure and we can have that mo- it's motion, it's.
I have it here if you want me to read it. This is a motion to for authorization for execution of contracts. Uh it authorizes the superintendent or his or her designee to execute on behalf of the school district, purchase orders, agreements uh for consulting services, grant agreements, and other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the school district. The superintendent or designee shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process, any employment agreements, and any long-term contracts without express authority from the board. That's the wording. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
We have a motion and a second um to accept the procedure for executing contracts. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? I saw no abstentions and the motion carries on a unanimous vote. Item four, the consent agenda includes minutes from April twenty second meeting.
I'll move the consent agenda.
We have motion and a second, uh discussion. I have one item related to the minutes. Um I think this might be the second time this has happened. Uh board members present says Dick France Chair SVU ESD, um which is which is incorrect. Um that would be Chris Murphy. So uh and that was the only correction, the only discussion I have about the meeting, about the minutes. Is there any other discussion? Um in addition, on the consent agenda, we include resignations um and Karen. This has decided to move on. Anything you'd like to say about that, Jim?
I uh wish her well. Um she has decided that she wants to go in a different direction, maybe work a little less. Um so that'll be ended this year. Uh not sure how we're gonna fill that position yet in light of uh the economic uh terminal we have. Uh what I'm actually looking at doing right now is a hybrid position of the the registrar and my administrative assistant. Both of those positions are open and um HR is currently redrafting that job description um uh for my reviewer to see uh if that is a feasible thing to combine those two positions and save a salary going into next year.
Well, sorry to see her go as well as on Terry and um Special Ed and Molly. Is there any other discussion regarding consent agenda? Hearing hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh opposed? I saw no abstentions. So the consent agenda is approved on a unanimous vote. Item five is policy. There are three policies um which we should adopt on an individual basis. Um fifty fifty is discipline of pupils, suspension and expulsion of pupils. Um is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion and uh from Fran and second from Leon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? And no extensions. Uh fifty fifty discipline of pupils is adopted. Fifty sixty five. Verbal and physical assault of an employee. Is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? No extensions? And motion carries fifty sixty five is adopted and fifty four hundred, student safety. Is there a motion? Again, um Fran and Leon with. Is there any discussion regarding fifty four hundred? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Fifty four hundred is adopted on a unanimous vote. Um Jim, superintendent's report.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um so the my main focus right now is in the impact of uh finances on our operations and what the start of uh the school year in September or actually end of August will look like for us. So we have two teams working on the start of school issue. One is focused on the elementary schools and one is the middle school, high school team. And the team is made up of uh two principals, to central office administrator on each team. Special education representative and uh we're also gonna be adding our school nurses. Multiple scenarios. Including um full remote learning is a possibility that that may still happen to, we're back at school. Uh just like everything was pre uh pandemic, that seems to be unlikely. So uh caring for all the possibilities uh in between, we're still waiting for complete guidance from the state and agents of education. Not sure when that will come, not sure if anyone really knows. Uh you know, what's gonna happen. The struggles, of course, is how do we deal with social distancing in a school setting? How do we deal with it on a school bus? How do we protect employees? How do we protect students? How do we make sure the buildings are clean? Uh can we get enough? Do we even have access to enough personal protection equipment? Um and uh you know, at what cost and what impact that is on the budget, so. That's the work that those uh both teams met today. Um I said it on both meetings and uh making progress on a, I mean, all the meetings are documented, making progress on the ideas and then what goes on to that that meeting grid then becomes the conversation uh going forward, so. Uh nothing definitive and I and I know, you know, I hear parents wanna know, they they need to know, they need to make plans, what's it gonna be like? I certainly understand that, especially from childcare issues. Um but uh all I can say is we're still, you know, working on those plans and still waiting for um what guidance we're gonna receive from the state. And as far as personal protection equipment, one of the things the Superintendent Association keeps saying to the uh Secretary of Education is we need uh, we believe that there should be a centralized purchase for that so that we're not competing against each other to try and buy the same equipment from the limited vendors that may have it. Just driving up to price more and that uh if we're gonna be allowed to open, then I think one of the things Secretary of Education keeps saying that, you know, we're gonna have to file, follow those guy uh social distance guidelines, which uh you know, I sat in a meeting today with uh one of the principals and they had uh their um custodial staff remove all the desks from one of the classrooms, this was the high school. And place desks back in, uh keeping them six feet apart and it was determined they could put eight desks in that classroom. So uh I'm not really sure how that's gonna work and uh so that, we'll continue to it. So that that's that's one big focus right now is what the status quo looks like and the other is uh the financial impact on on our our budgets from this pandemic. Um you've received some emails from me explaining, you know, what uh what I've been, my meetings with the teachers association. Um they're gonna meet Friday and uh I just wanna thank the union offices for uh meeting with me and being uh being willing to consider um um being part of the the solution to try and uh save positions. And uh I applaud them and thank them. Um you know, I don't know what the outcome of the association vote will be on Friday. And that's why we have the unusual s- um step of uh warning um three special meetings for Friday evening for all three boards starting four thirty, five thirty, six thirty. Um where i- if if uh the vote doesn't know the way that we're hoping it's going, then we are uh faceably considering riffing some staff. And uh I hope to have those lists finalized by tomorrow. It's not gonna be uh a blanket riff. You know, we've talked to things of like riffing everyone like two years or less uh seniority, we're we're not gonna do that. Um we're gonna be more selective. Um and uh ultimately, it's the board's decision. You can tell me that um you you don't want to send out riff notices and for those listening don't know, reduction in force notices didn't mean you were using the acronym. Um you know, it I've talked to some of our state um legislators and I clean yesterday I had a a wonderful conversation with Mary Marcy and um you know, the guidance is just not there yet on that. It appears that, you know, they're gonna set the yield, the ed fund will be intact. Uh we will receive the money that we um anticipate that we're gonna get based on the pledges of past, but we have what we don't know, what nobody doesn't know is where that hole in the ed fund is going to be filled, how it's gonna be filled. The legislature uh to their credit, decided that, you know, it's not gonna be on the backs of homeowners through uh an exorbitant increase in the tax rate, but unless there's another round of federal federal stimulus money or some other revenue source, whether that's borrowing or not, that I I don't see where they're come, where that, where there will be enough funds to fill the uh ed fund, so. Uh my guidance to you is to consider reductions in spending. We are uh not filling any of the twenty positions that are open at this time and then the only ones of those twenty that will be open uh filled will be those that are uh critical need or um or safety issue that you know, or requirement. You need to have a school nurse that is part-time, so uh that is forthcoming because uh you you know, it could happen that when we see a better uh we get a better picture of the financial situation midsummer, then I may tell the principal that you can go ahead and fill that position, but for right now. And that's everything from school nurses to custodial maintenance positions, when those twenty positions are, so that's a significant savings there. And then, as I've said before, limiting capital uh spending to only uh the high school has a a scheduled roof section to be replaced. It's not leaking, but it's on the schedule, it's aging out. We're gonna uh try and push that off to another fiscal year and uh save money in that way and if um if it works out with the teachers association, you know, what I'll be proposing is that uh no um off-contract, as we sometimes call them, but non-union employees would receive a raise next year. Uh we also have to um go into discussions with support staff and the principals association. They have their own bargaining units right now. Uh just dealing with the teachers association because their deadline for riff notices is Monday. Um which if you remember was a a fifteen-day extension with the contract says we're supposed to. Um so yesterday, in light of their vote on Friday, I asked if they would consider extending the deadline again till Wednesday of next week because I explained to them, I need forty-eight hours notice to warn a board meeting. Uh or as I said in my email to the attorney, advised me that uh riff notifications is not something that falls under allowing me to do um an emergency meeting, cause you should know whether you're riffing, it's not true, doesn't meet the definition of emergency. So I can't use the twenty-four hour rule, I need forty-eight hours. So that's why we're warning meetings for Friday night, we warned them this morning. Cause uh it'll be too late um to be able to meet the Monday deadline. Uh again, uh credit to teachers association, leadership and our director of HR, we all met and negotiated or or discussed rather the process of how those notifications can happen with such short notice if we need to do that. We would uh, they agreed that the notification would be through DocuSign, which some of you will be coming familiar with on how we're signing uh warrants and um so and then followed up with a with a um a hard copy and that would take place on Monday. Again, hoping that we don't need to do that and like ultimately, it's the board's decision whether you want to um run the risks, all boards, you'd wanna run the risk of um deficit spending uh during this school year. And as I, I know I've answered some board members, not all, cause I don't think everybody was on this email. Uh the Union Elementary Board had, you know, asked about borrowing to spend. Um you know, the the board certainly, all the boys have a right to take, go out and take a bond, but um you have to have the public vote on it. The board can't vote to take a bond to to have, to borrow money to spend. And um Renee Gordon's initial investigation of that is that uh most of the typical bond lending uh associations um will not let us uh bond money for operating expenses, it's more like a capital. So then the other thing that we looked into was what what is the impact of definite spending and can we do it and um the answer is yes, you can do it, but you need to pay it back uh the next year. And you also, any money that you were rolling over um would be taken first, which then the following year would be a disaster. You would have a a dramatic increase in what your tax rate would be because you have to pay back that deficit spending in the very next year. And so you, the only way you would do that is for a dramatic increase of taxes or the cuts would be in that year, so. Uh so as a consultant, our attorney, um she's not recommending that we either we avoid deficit spending and we do not consider bond for operating expenses.
Uh do you have a question?
Yeah, just a, just a, I had a conversation with David Durfee this morning. Um it to I I think I understood him correctly, that we we would not be deficit spending for the next school year. Is that correct? The the ed fund has established what we're going to get and to his knowledge, um we we will get that. It's it's the following year where there might be the issue and at that point, um there's some optimism that some federal monies will be there. Uh this is obviously a, an issue that's hitting every single state, not just Vermont. Federal monies will be there to cover that gap.
So I, like, as I said, I did acknowledge that the ed fund is, you will, we will receive it. But nobody knows how you will. So Dave can say that, but I I have another state representative said to me, I wouldn't really, I would reduce your spending and be very cautious of your spending because we don't know where we're gonna get the money to fill that ed fund. So you you know, we we can say you're gonna get it. But what, so the question for boards are gonna, is going to be, what is the prudent thing to do?
Right, and so that was gonna be my, the follow-up is is, is there an ability, do do we have an ability to get from Renee or from from you the, okay, not not filling open positions and not doing the roof and, you know, pushing, kicking the can down the road with deferred maintenance gets us to X. Going full, going full boat gets us to Y. I mean, I I think, I think we're going to need for that Friday meeting and I'm sure you're already on this. Like what is, what are, what are our different options look like? With, of course, the goal being, let's not take away, do everything possible to not take away from the education kids in this community are getting.
Yeah, we will have those. That, I mean, that's part of, I I pretty much already know what the the numbers are from the the first two, but we'll save it for Friday night if we need to have that discussion. I'm hoping that we're not going to, because what I did, the thing about that, I I told the board that I would not be remember how the process would be, I will forward to you, I will, I will give a presentation to the boards that here's our recommendation uh for reduction in force and you can accept it, reject it, take part of it. Um you know, s- you know, try and do as least harm as possible. Um so we will have the numbers to back what those different levels of reductions would be. And again, and this is why part of the agreement with the teachers association would be is that uh we would reopen if 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 it becomes apparent that we don't need their reduction, then we would begin, we would not wait till the fall to open negotiations, we would reopen the negotiations and uh see what happens. So if, you know, we truly did get all the money from the ed fund that we thought we were gonna get, but right now, um it's a promise, but it's not a pron- a promise that I'm comfortable with.
Hey Jim?
Yeah, yeah, Fran?
Yeah, well, I I've seen this before and having been on these boards for over thirty years, I wouldn't hold much faith in the state promises and this and that stuff. And if you don't do something this year, you're definitely gonna do it the following year. So it doesn't make any difference, we gotta make prudent uh decisions about what's gonna happen. Uh there is no money and and part of that, the the is the state's fault anyway. Uh but I I'll leave it at that, but for for Scott, I listened to Scott, what he said, I I understand. And I too feel the same way, but there's gonna be no way that you're gonna not cut something. If something's gonna go, whether we like it or not, I mean, it's just, you're not gonna be able to operate like that. And I definitely am not gonna decide the deficit spend. That is not uh the way to do it.
Leon?
Well, well, I was gonna say the same thing. I wouldn't be in favor of deficit spending. We we need to put the things out on the table and and be prudent in terms of how we're going to try to offer education next year anyway. But uh eh we have no choice with the constraints that we got and the time and the dates and so forth. You gotta put these things there. Other, otherwise, we're legally bound to uh provide salaries and jobs when we don't have money to cover.
Ray?
Uh well, first off, um you mentioned the uh funds that come to the state for supervisor unions or school districts actually. Oh, um you also mentioned that the state was thinking of clawing it back. The question is, what's the basis for clawing it back if it's actually money that's expenses that were, additional expenses that were incurred because of the COVID virus? So that's, that's the point of the money.
Yeah.
I don't see how the state can claw that back.
What I said at a previous meeting, they certainly are considering that and by the clawback is like we may see a reduction
I I don't see how they're legally able to do that. Based on, you know, they, the money from the Fed says that it's for covering these expenses, not for covering the state's deficits.
I I don't, I don't know what to say to you, Ray. I I agree, but I I don't know what.
But you think they're going to uh finagle?
I I I think the plant, part of that. I, I, I think the plan, part of that plan is going to be, whatever we get in CARES Act money, we will receive that, that fewer dollars from the Ed Fund. That'll be plugging the hole in the Ed Fund. But I haven't seen that in a concrete plan yet.
Right. So we don't know how much that is for this SCU.
No, no. Couple of things I wanted to tell you about is, you know, we were, our center, we have concerns about central office, the physical building, the accessibility of that building, particularly the lower floor, whether we're ADA compliant. And so we have been looking for a new central office, as you know. The prop, one of the properties we're seriously considering, Two Ten South Street, has become available because Bennington College is leaving earlier than they thought. Probably leaving early for the same reason that I'm telling you that we're suspending looking for a new, a new central office at this time with the financial uncertainty. You know, I know what our rent is through, you know, we, we rent central office from the Union Elementary District. I know what that, that rent is. Anything that may be an increase, I can't support it this time. So I, I hope, I told our Director of Finance, Renee Gordon, to tell the the vendor that we were dealing with that we're not, we're not going to be interested in moving at this time. I mean, there is the possibility because, and it's a possibility, so that makes it a gamble that I'm comfortable. The rent was higher, but it was an all-inclusive rent than what we, where we pay maintenance, one, and utility, one from, from dollar one to the Union Elementary District. So in theory, it could be cheaper to move. But there's also symbolism of that, too, that while we're asking people to sacrifice, then, you know, we move to a newer, plushier building that I think we would be criticized for. Even if it was revenue neutral, and at this point, I'm, I'm not sure that it would be revenue neutral. I think it would be slightly higher. So we're, we're going to suspend looking for a new central office location at this time. And then, again, I, I want to say that, because I want to thank the, the Teachers Association for, for agreeing to try and partner with us on these reductions. And, you know, what we're talking about is them agreeing to take no increase for next school year. Those of you who have been with me in negotiations, you know how that is, that's a big ask compared to what normally goes on in negotiations. So I commend them for even considering it. I don't know what the outcome of the vote will be from their membership. But it was, I believe, a real stand-up position from the association leadership. And I want to publicly thank them for meeting with us and considering that, so. I hope, I hope it goes well.
Okay. I, I'd agree with the superintendent on that. I had a couple of other questions. One is back on your plan for opening or whatever, all it, of all. Did, did you have any teachers on that, those committees? You had nurses.
I'm, I'm, hold on, I'm admitting Richard to the meeting right now. He's joining us a little late. Just click that.
Hi Jim.
Hi, Richard.
Uh, sorry, I thought the meeting was starting at four-thirty.
That's all right. Well, you are now here. And I did record it, so I'll be able to send you that. And, and Cat TV's recording also, too.
Okay, and I can work from Cat TV, too.
Good, thank you. No, at this time, we don't have teachers on this working committee, but it will expand. These, these groups are going to expand once the initial ideas get out. So I envision they'll, they'll, they'll get larger. We have a special ed director, nurse, principals, or principal designate. We, we, and, and we also, on the high school, we invited the Creative Development Center to send two representatives. So each group has two representatives right now on it, saying, trying to keep the size on willing, but I'm in discussions also with the Teachers Association and keeping it, you know. Nick and I have been doing weekly meetings with them, and Statist School will be part of that discussion, too.
All right, well, I, I think that's in the mix at some point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before it's, it's, the cake is too far baked. And the second question was, with respect to Friday's riff meetings, if they happen, with, with, a sort of approximate picture of the impacts of these decisions for not just twenty-one, but going into twenty-two, this will carry over. In terms of what kind of spending constraints those are under. And I actually had a third question, which is really more a legislative question about, I thought the legislature was talking about allowing districts to borrow money without interest, carrying charges. The legislature was going to find a way to pick those up, but maybe they dropped that legislation.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything further on the borrowing piece, and I, I don't know, was Scott going to say something on that? No?
There was, there was that suggestion in one of those.
Yes, there was. Yeah, there was, but I have not, I haven't heard that suggestion for over two weeks. So I, I'm assuming it's, it's not going anywhere. The teachers on the, what was the question in the middle, Ray? Your second.
Well, there's a question about teachers on these study committees, you know, next year. And then I was asking about some rough projections of fiscal impact, not only for twenty-one, but into twenty-two.
So if, if those meetings are necessary, what I, what I, I hope to have at that is levels of impact. Like, you know, how far do you want to go? How much do you have?
And do we, you know, a fourth question is, you know, the equity impacts of all of these decisions on children of poverty and children with special needs. Those all have to be considered.
I, I guess I would add one thing, and that's, and I know, you know, Jim, you and I have talked about this, and I've stated it before, but I, I truly think if, if this region is going to attract businesses and quality people to work in those businesses, we have to lead with education. And there is a financial, there's a financial impact, or there's a, there's an impact to the quality of the education we're able to provide. We're going to do everything possible to make that as minimal as possible, but it is a reality. And I, I think we have to have an idea of what, what types of impact this has on that education. And therefore, you could, you can draw lines to how attractive is this region for, for businesses or quality people to come and work in the businesses that are already here? And, and not making it so young people leave. I mean, I think these are all, these are all things that are, are impacting our region, and, and education is a main thing that people look at when, when coming to a region. And, you know, I realize, I realize, I'm not being naive to everything that's going on. I, I realize it completely. But it's, it is one of the things that I firmly believe we have to keep, keep our eyes squarely on. Because we're create, we're talking about permanent things for, for, for what is a temporary problem. Might be a longer temporary problem than we want, but it's temporary.
So let me say this, I don't want to riff anyone. But I feel I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't give the board the option and try and paint a financial picture of what this may look like. So I reject out of hand the idea of, like, and this was one thing that was discussed, including by myself. You know, like, all right, let's just, how many teachers do we have that have two years or less employment with us, which the number was like seventy-eight? That type of broad brush approach doesn't work. I'd be, I want to be much more precise in what we're considering. So then we can consider, what your question that you're all asking is what's the impact of that reduction? What do we lose with that? And then we have to weigh the, you know, weigh the bag. And I, I agree, we're, we're kind of navigating in the dark here because we don't know what that picture is. And then even if we are going to get every dollar that we think we're going to get from the Ed Fund, we also have to be thinking forward to what's the impact in the following year, which everyone is telling us could be even more severe because the federal funds won't be there. The rainy day fund from the state won't be there, so it could be even more severe. So if, if all that happens out of next year is that we reduce spending so that we roll over even more money, you know, like we're doing this year, then, you know, that, that, that could be a plus. But always weigh it against what we're going to lose in that process, and ultimately, what our, how it impacts our students.
You're all set, Jim?
Yes, yes. A little lag time in the Zoom meeting, sorry.
In that case, we'll move on to the Chair's Report. Again, I'd like to welcome Todd Wilkins, Celeste Keel. It looks like Bill Basic is in there. As representatives from Arlington and Sandgate, they aren't formally joining our supervisor union until July first of twenty-one. Maybe. I'm not sure if Todd is the one I've spoken to more often than any other. I'm not sure if Todd has any comment, or Celeste at this point, about your appeals going forward?
Dick, we've, we've, as you know, sent the letter up. They had a meeting, I think it was the twentieth. They were going to be reaching out to you as well as Nicole Whelan and asking some questions. And that's pretty much what was left at this point. In their letter, all it requested was a, was an extension of a year to kind of help us get through this as well as other challenges that we already faced, or, you know, they're still on our plates. So that's pretty much it. I think we're still going to be playing on moving forward as we are now. And I guess we'll leave it up to the superintendents for now to kind of start laying out that pathway. And we'll just wait to hear from the State Board of Education at this point.
Always await. We have a superintendence evaluation to complete. I've been a little derelict in my responsibility to get that on board. And some of the things we wanted to do as an evaluation committee were kind of put on hold because of the COVID-nineteen issue. And so I sent out an email today with some of my thoughts. I know there are other people who have observations and additions to that. If we could keep that moving, I would hope we could complete that by the end of June's, or June's meeting, I guess, if that's possible. And committee assignments. I, I, given the complication of everything else that's going on, committee assignments, I would think, would do just as well as stay as they were. And that would put Ray, Cindy Brownell, and myself on the Personnel Committee. I'm not sure who the Mount Anthony representative is. If they selected one at their last meeting, I don't know that, Jim.
Yeah, we selected last meeting. It was myself and from, we had Woodfoot member, and we had, trying to think of who the other person was on that. But we had three for SBSU.
Okay, so was Ron Higgins back on?
Well, that's Ron, yeah. Ron is on here, that's right. And I couldn't, I'm trying to think of whoever the other person was there, some.
Well, on I, I don't, I, I was just speaking to the Personnel Committee, and that was Ray, Cindy, Ron Higgins, if he's Mount Anthony representative again, and myself. Superintendent's evaluation was Leon, Ray, Chala, and myself. Negotiations, Leon and Fran, and Scott were there before. And Policy Committee was Leon and myself. Finance, Susan Ho, Ray Molino, Chala, and me. If that is, meets the pleasure of the board, I will keep them as they are. And I would also ask that if Arlington or Sandgate, although not formally a part of our SCU wishes to sit in on any of those policy drafting meetings and those kind of things, please let us know so that we can get you involved, at least for observation, and, and we'll go forward from there.
Hey Dick.
Yes.
I believe the SCU, SBSU reps are Leon, me, and Ed Letourneau, and Ron Higgins as an alternate.
Oh, Ron, okay.
No, I'm not an alternate. Ron Higgins is an alternate.
Right. So it's not Ed Letourneau, so it's Ron, Leon, and Fran.
Right, there's no alternates anymore.
Right.
Okay. Letourneau was an alternate.
Right, but he isn't part of it anymore.
Right, right.
So are these committee assignments okay with this board?
Dick, Renee, the only thing I wanted to mention is you mentioned Susan Ho's name, and she's not on the SBSU board anymore.
She was not, thank you. There are three others of us that are, Ray, Chala, and myself are on finding already, so there's three of us. And that's pretty much all I have under the Chair's Report. I'd make other information, other questions, comments to be brought before the board. Hearing none. There's an SBSU budget status report. Sorry, Chala.
Just one question. I don't know if anybody else is struggling, but is there any way we could make this
We can't hear you. At least I couldn't, yeah.
Very garbled, Chala, if you couldn't, is there?
I think she was just asking if there was any I think she was asking if there was any way we could make the meeting later.
Is that what you were asking, Chala? Dick, ask her to wave her hands if that's what she's asking. Yeah, good suggestion. Chala, did you want the meeting to be scheduled later? If so, could you raise your hand? I guess it's garbled on that end, too. Yeah. Well, my suggestion would be that we can connect with emails and find out what it was Chala was looking for.
She seems frozen, too, so, yeah.
I'll email you, Chala, and we'll find out, and I'll get the information mailed out to everybody else. Will that work? Because we can't understand you. She might be broken again.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and item ten is an executive session. According to one VSA, three thirteen A three appointment or evaluation of a public officer.
I can't hear you, you just can't hear me.
Yeah, we can't. Yeah, we can't hear you in any intelligible form.
So what normally needs to happen is you go off and, I mean, leave a meeting and come back on. May fix that.
Uh, our normal process would, would be to ask those folks who are not part of. The supervisor reunion board at the moment to step off this process? Or do you wanna open it up again, Jim?
Well, I had started a link for executive meeting, but I'm, you know, I'm on another computer. I got two different computers going and it won't let me run two meetings at the same time, so. The, uh, it may be easier that, and I'll be able to see who's here. But, uh, Mike from Cat TV, like, i- i- if you. So I'm, hm, I'm at loss for how do I keep? Cause you probably, you may take action based on what we tell you in executive session. You may come out, take action, you may not. And that's why I said to Mike beforehand, I had, I had a second Zoom meeting all set up, but it's telling me I have to end this one. To start, uh, hey Renee? Renee, are you there?
I think she stepped off.
Oh. Hmm. I was gonna have her, um.
So if you end it, you can't get back on this, can you?
You, uh, yeah, so hold on, what I'm gonna see if I can get Renee to come back in. Can you, I can make her the host of the meeting.
Uh, so you could make us the host here at Cat TV?
Oh, Mike, that would be great. So I'm gonna make, so, uh.
And then you can start your executive.
Me or, um?
The one with the cannot access television is me.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna make you the host, so the meeting will stay open.
Okay.
And then board members, I will la-, as soon as I, I leave here, let's see if it now. It'll let me launch the exec, I sent you the link for the executive, um. Give you one minute to log back in.
We don't have to change anything on our end?
Yeah, yes you do. You're gonna have to go out.
Oh.
And then come back in, but because I made Catamont, um, the host, the meeting will stay open. Oh, okay, so I'm gonna leave this meeting and I'm gonna open up, um. The executive session.
So how are you gonna do that? Are you gonna send us a new?
I emailed you the link, uh, this, uh, earlier today with the, uh, executive session link. So you should have an email for it. So I'll get out of this and open it and when done the executive session, we'll come back to the meeting that Cat TV is doing. If all else fails, if we can't get to it, just come back to this original meeting.
Yeah, I, I won't, I won't stop this meeting.
Thank you. I don't see Chayla, but I know I got a text from her saying that she's in another meeting. She would try to join us. And, uh, I don't see Richard back here, but I am recording this if we wanna give it another minute. Dick, to see if, uh, and then make the motion to come out of, I don't, we make a motion to come out of executive session, I.
Don't move, I'll make it anyway.
I can, we got a motion in a second. So. As a result of our executive session, is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, are we waiting for the, the other person to show up?
Well, we could make a motion.
We can make, make a motion based on what was, took place in executive session.
Yeah, we can make a motion that.
We, uh, deny the request for a leave of absence.
Yeah.
I was asking that.
That's a, that's a little shorter and brusser than I was going to do.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I guess you could put the, make the motion a number like we usually do over the years, but you don't have to.
Make it a number as in?
Yeah, usually you can call it number seventy-eight or one oh one or something instead of using names.
Oh. Would you like to add a number to that, Leon? He was the name anyway.
I have no, uh, no problem with, uh, adding a number to it. I only named just the, the request. And so nobody knows who that request was besides the people that went in the executive session.
Right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I hear no opposition. I see no abstentions. Motion carries. And, uh, I believe that is, we're at the point.
Why move we adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Gee Scott, I told you we'd be done by five.
All right, we have.
Thank you all.
If motion is second to adjourn, we are adjourned at four fifty-seven.
And hopefully I won't see any of you Friday night.
I hope so too, Jim.
Okay.
I really hope so.
Yeah, me too. Good night.
Thanks, Fox.
Good night.
Bye.